Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
At six thirty on April 23rd, 2020. Tonight, we are again. Has she coming in?
No.
No.
And the agenda, Sarah.
Let me show you the agenda. Hold on.
It's got to be up to the public.
We are once again in remote locations, each of us. And we are being recorded by Fact TV tonight again. And you, I think, can see it on your Facebook or their Facebook. We also now have the agenda up for the evening. And because we are in separate locations, I will remind you that once again, when we take votes on these things that you see on the agenda, we will be taking them by a roll call vote. I listened to the governor again this afternoon for his daily update, and he has indicated that maybe sometime next week, he will give us some information on potential openings or relaxation of some of his orders. But I think he made it very clear that we should not expect a great deal and reminded us all once again that we should be keeping our distance, wearing face masks when we were out in public, and that we should, in fact, stay home unless we need to be out. Sarah, can you drop this down a bit? We're missing the top portion, at least I am on my screen. Starts with maps and lots on the, on my screen.
I've got it scrolled all the way to the top, so I'm not sure what's going on. I could try resharing it.
Well, I'm waiting to order, and Steve.
There it goes. You got it now, Sarah.
Now, that's it. That's good. All right, Steve.
I make a motion to accept the accounts payable check register in the total amount of $117,778.92 for checks dated 4/24/2020. This includes $56,861.68 payment to the John Deere Credit Department for Highway Department Loader.
I'll second that motion. Are there any questions or comments about it? If not, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
And I vote yes. So the yes, ayes have it, and we are approving accounts payable.
I make a motion to accept the payroll register totaling $24,988. Needed 4/24/2020, and the 941 payroll tax transfer of $5,046.93.
Second, are there any questions or comments about it? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Peggy said votes yes, so the payroll is approved.
And I just would like to amend both motions to give Sarah downing the authorization to sign both of those.
Thank you. I'll second that, and we're all in favor then.
Aye.
And I vote yes. So Sarah, if you will sign both of those, that will help us immensely. Thank you.
I make a motion to accept the select board minutes of April 16th, 2020.
And I second them. Are there any questions about those minutes? Hearing none, then I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Peggy votes yes. The minutes of April 16th are approved.
I make a motion to accept the non-public select board session minutes that should remain sealed for April 16th, 2020.
I'll second that. Are there any questions or comments about them? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Steve?
Aye.
And I vote yes as well. So the ayes have it, and the select board, non-public select board session for April 16th is approved, and it will remain sealed.
I ask that the select board recognize the following committee reports. The library trustees' minutes of November 12th, 2020, the library trustee minutes of December 10th, 2020. I'm going to assume that the minutes are not correct. Is that right, Sarah?
That's right. The November should be 2019.
Oh, 19.
Right.
Yeah, I gotta fix that. Oh, well.
And then the library trustee minutes of December 2010, 2019, the library trustee minutes of January 14th, 2020, library trustees' minutes of February 11th, 2020, library trustees' minutes of April 15th, 2020, and the planning board minutes of March 10th, 2020. Was there a reason that all of the library trustee minutes were withheld?
Not that I'm aware of. They should have, you should have gotten them all.
Okay.
I didn't get any. It prompted me when I got the last one that we hadn't received any in months, so. And they sent them once I asked.
Okay.
They should have. I'll I'll remind them. I get them so automatically that I assume you were getting them as well, but I will see that they are reminded that they have to send them to you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to accept the property tax refund for map 12 lot 55, sub lot 23, for the amount of $20.38 for overpayment.
I'll second that. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
I vote yes as well. So that, the map and lot 1255, sub lot 23, overpayment is approved for payment.
I make a motion to accept the overpayment for map 3, lot 13, sub lot 3, for $20.80, which is an overpayment on the 2019 property taxes.
I'll second that. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The repayment, overpayment, rather, of map and lot 3133 is approved.
I make a motion to accept the overpayment for lot 3, sub lot 12, I'm sorry, map 3, lot 12, sub lot 8, in the amount of $7.88 for an overpayment of 2019 property taxes.
Second, are there any questions? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That map and lot 312 subsection 8 is approved for repaying an overpayment.
I make a motion to accept the property tax refund for map 8 lot 105 for an amount of $10.59 for overpayment of 2019 property taxes.
Second, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that map and lot 8105 for the refund is approved.
I make a motion to accept the property tax refund for map 19 lot 63 in the amount of $44.10 for the overpayment of 2018 property tax.
Second, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We have approved map and lot 1963 refund for overpayment.
I make a motion to accept the property tax refund for map 19 lot 63 in the amount of $34.73 for overpayment of 2018 property tax lien.
Second, are there any questions about that one or comment? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So we have approved map and lot 1963 for repayment of an overpayment.
I make a motion to accept the certification of yield taxes for map 13 lot 27, sub lot 1, for the amount of $556.8.
Second's a motion. Are there any questions or comments about this? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Steve?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
I make a motion to accept the certification of yield taxes for map 13 lot 120 for $794.52.
Second, any questions? Call for the vote. Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is approved.
I make a motion to accept the certification of yield taxes for map 8 lot 62 in the amount of $153.99.
Second, are there any questions or comments? If not, I'll call for the vote. Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is approved.
I make a motion to accept the warrant yield tax levy for a total combined $1,504.59 for the warrant.
I'll second that. Are there any questions about it? No comments, then I'll call for the vote. Steve?
Aye.
I vote aye. The original warrant yield tax levy is approved. Okay. Let's go on to old business. I just want to give a quick couple of updates on this. Broadband, we met again last night with Rob by Zoom. I'm talking about Rob Kester, who is the CEO for Consolidated Communications, Inc., here in New Hampshire. And we have agreed to, I think, a final contract. We've made some adjustments to the last contract that he had given us that calls for one thing in particular that all the potential subscribers to this, to Consolidated, once we get our fiber optics in, they should be pleased to know that the subscriber fee will be $7.30 per month for the life of that contract. That's the significant change, I believe. I should also tell you that I think that Rich Kreisel and I have finished with the help of a number of other people, our bond bank application. And we will see that the select board has it at the beginning of the week. We set it out for review with our broadband committee, but I, most of the work has really been done and doesn't call for them except to review it, to be sure that we're right. We will be getting, you should know, a taxable bond because we are working with a private company who will benefit from this project. So that's why the bond will be taxable. On another issue, I would like to tell you something. We have not forgotten about that brownfield. We are about ready to make another quarterly report to the EPA, but we have received this week another document from Ransom Consulting with whom we are working on this project, and it is a site-specific quality assurance plan. The SSQAP, which is how it's known. And it is 453 pages long. And after I have finished reading it, and if I note anything that's wrong, I'll tell, obviously, Ransom. But it has now been sent to Area 1 of the EPA for their review, and also to the DES. So that's, we're still working, even though it isn't obvious to the townspeople at this point. I want to note that Cheryl Mayberry has joined us. Hi, Cheryl. We're glad to be here.
Hi there.
Good to see you. We are in old business already.
Yeah, I apologize. I was having some issues.
That's okay. That's all right. That's we're in old business, and we're now looking at the ZBA letter, which we have written. I hope you've read it.
Sarah, can you move the?
Can you put it up?
Again?
Hold on, let me do a different share. Hold on. You want the letter?
That would be good, but the agenda too needs to move a little bit.
Okay. I think I've got to go. I think I have to bring it up. Hold on. I've got the marketing. Let me move this. Where's that part? Let me see if I can pull the other part up. CBA letter. Do you have it?
No, I don't. There it is.
Can you move it all the way down?
Yes, it has been corrected, Steve.
Okay.
While she caught the error earlier.
Okay. Is that, that's not what I was thinking, Peggy.
No, it still isn't.
It says avoiding the issue, which really that we do want to permit flags?
No, it's supposed to be not. And Sarah, I have a copy that you sent me that has not in there.
Hmm. I can quickly fix it because you'll sign it this weekend, so we have time to fix it. So. You'd like not to permit feather flags, right?
Steve called me about it. I went in and looked what you had sent me, and you had the word in there. So I thought, well, good, she caught that error.
There's prohibit.
This not right one being, you corrected it. This is your, this is one that's not right because I want you to remove the word being in the second paragraph.
I thought I took being out.
You did. So this is a totally different copy of the letter that you sent me earlier.
Okay, because I remember being was taken out.
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to to accept the letter with corrections noted.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments you want to make about the letter or the issue? All right, I'll call for a roll call vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So all in, we are all in favor. Thus, the letter is approved, and the corrected version will be signed this weekend, and we'll go out to the zoning board. The next issue is the rec area. If you could take this down. Do you have that deed? I've read it. I don't know whether anyone else has.
I did send it to everyone.
Yep, and I've read it.
Okay.
And my only comment was, do we want to improve, and I'm not sure it belongs in the deed, a comment about that the school can continue to use the parking lot as they are today?
Yes, but I don't think we put that in the deed.
It wasn't there. And I just asked the question. Should it be there? And is they going to bring that up?
They will bring it up, but I'm not I guess we could ask Hocken Smith to do that, but I'm not quite sure. I would prefer that we write a letter that we register with the deed.
That's fine. I just know that the school board is going to ask that question.
I'm sure they will. We we also are still waiting, though, from Hocken Smith to tell us whether he found any surveys. The last time I heard from him, he was going to be looking for a survey because he thought that he might find something. So we don't have that yet. Is this?
Do you want me to try to find that deed, or are you good?
I guess we're good, unless somebody else wants to see it again or has any questions about it. No?
No, I'm good.
I'll draft a letter that we can record with it, which will indicate that, in fact, and then it'll follow the deed always, that the school has the right to use that property for parking, et cetera. All right?
Yep.
Steve, is that all right? Maybe have we, have we lost his?
He looks frozen.
He looks kind of frozen. I don't know. He's moving. Oh, he just dropped.
All right. Well, I think he said that would be okay earlier, so I'll have that ready for you for next week. All right?
Yep.
The North Street drainage, after we spoke with the landowner of the North Street where we're going to be putting in a drywell, he sent the easement which we had drafted for him, which comes straight out of the state's, you know, materials, so that it's really quite simple. He was concerned, so he sent it to his attorney. And we have not yet heard back from his attorney on how he feels about that particular drainage easement. I'm sure his attorney will recognize that, in fact, it's one that the state circulates to be used. Under further actions, the flashing sign, the Highway Department and the Police Department and I have decided that we would like to test that area for speeders. When school resumes in the fall, we will see that our movable street sign is, and flashing sign is moved up there so we can record traffic and some of its speed. If that's acceptable, if that will be acceptable before we spend money on more signs.
I think it's helpful, but I think that the nature of the initial complaint was that people were speeding outside of school times. But that when the kids were outside, like on, you know, Saturday and things like that. So I think as long as we leave it up through the weekend, I think we'll still get the same, you know, we'll still get information about what happens outside of the school hours.
We can do that. We can see that it's there for a good full week, seven days.
Yep. That'll be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll let, I'll let Selah know that.
Thank you very much. All right, anything else? There, let's go on into budget reduction. I'd like to have Steve here, and since he isn't, let's skip over a bit to what else have we got under new business?
Oh, Steve's coming back in.
Coming back. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Good. We were just about to get into new business for the budget reduction information.
Yes.
And we should have all received at least the material from the, we have Hooper, we have the library, we have the police, we have highway, and we have the central office. I think that's about all that we got. And they have all had reasonable suggestions for how they might reduce their budgets. Justine in the library, if you were looking at it, that was the very first one we got, felt that because they had not been in the library now for some time, that they would, their savings would really come from their utility lines and the maintenance that would have been done during this time period. Their people have continued to work with projects that they have been given, so they are being paid. Do you have any comments or questions about it?
No.
The police budget, I think, was maybe the second one I got. Have you all had a chance to read that?
Yes.
They've had salary savings because, if you recall, they have an officer who had surgery in January. And so he's been, and he's not coming back until the end of May. So he has not been paid during that time period. He's been on other benefits.
The one thing that they had in their listing, Peggy, I don't think we should delay the portion of the radios.
No, I don't think so either. I think what Lieutenant Sanctuary told me when we discussed this is that he's been looking at some other suppliers who may give us a better price. And for that reason, he had been waiting, but I think they should go ahead and order those radios.
It's a matter of safety, so.
I think so too. I think so too. Not a great deal, but it's a help in what they're doing. They don't have as much overtime right now because they are only responding, you know, to emergency calls and those things that they have to deal with. They aren't out on the road a great deal. The next one I have in my hand is the highway.
Yep.
And the highway has given us a list of things that they're going to be doing right now. Well, they've already feel that they are under budget by about $50,000. And the estimates that they have been getting, as I understand it, for road paving that they wish to do this summer are considerably lower than expected. And so they feel that, and they're going to be giving a contract to someone else to do this work. And they feel it's much lower than initially anticipated. So they feel that they're going to be saving a good deal of money there. And of course, they aren't going to be spending, we'll have to encumber the new truck they've ordered because they know they aren't going to get that truck probably until into the next year.
Yeah, and the building is also encumbered money, I believe.
All right. So they obviously have savings within their budget.
Right.
And lastly, we have a one from the Hooper, I believe it is.
Yeah, I'd rather talk about that in non-public, Peggy.
All right. No, we have a reduction actually in the budget from the executive office, the municipal budget, and they feel that they are also going to be able to save some money by eliminating advertising. Well, that depends on whether we have to advertise for jobs, of course. But they could also cut out training and seminar mileage and save some money. And on how things are this fall, we may not be spending money for a staff-wide dinner if we're still under some restrictions.
Yeah, I just, to put it, to let every, I just want to add to that for, I guess, general knowledge is that we're only looking at this as a proportionate measure if our tax revenue doesn't materializes like we think it should.
Yes, we have always, as a town, had excellent collection of taxes, but we're thinking ahead should, for some reason, there be a drop in our rate of tax payment, we will have, we will have enough money to run the town and to do what we have set out to do.
Right.
Thanks for bringing that up. Are there any other comments about the budget at all? I appreciate the department directors getting this in, and thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Great River Hydro Letter. Do you want to comment on that, Sarah? You sent it out to us.
Yes, it seemed that there had been a couple of emergency incidents fairly recently. One had to do with like a hydraulic oil sheen on the river. And they sent boats out on the river, the emergency responders. And I think there was a concern about the responders not calling the Connecticut River Control Center first because of the high river flow. And there weren't booms up, and it could be very dangerous. So they were just reminding all the emergency responders, they should do that first.
Have you distributed that letter to all of those people?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
I just want to add something to this, Peggy. That this letter does not pertain at all to Walpole Fire Department or EMS. It is 100% associated with North Walpole Fire.
And it was sent to us, probably.
No, it was not. It was sent to the North Walpole Fire Chief.
Well, it's addressed to him, but it came to.
Yeah, we were copied on it, right.
Okay.
And it was, it had nothing to do with the Walpole Fire EMS. In fact, they In fact, they refused to participate.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. We should somehow communicate with them that they, so that they have a correct address for North Walpole.
We can do that.
Thank you. The next is the Audit Governance Form, which Rich sent us that we looked at. It's for our auditors. And we need to, I think we have to sign that, actually. He filled it out. So we'll have to go in this weekend to sign that audit form. He's begun our audit essentially online as the auditors request various things. Obviously, this will be a lengthy process if we continue to operate that way. But this is something that's done annually, and we will need to sign it. The next item on the agenda, since we don't have our agenda up anymore, is the, wow, the Women of Walpole made a donation to the Town Hall with a new food cart. They use Town Hall for their Mardi Gras fundraiser, and they noted that we could use a new food cart for ease in moving things around, since they were working in the kitchen. And they they sent us the money to buy one, and we have seen pictures of it, and it looks like a great contribution, which we now need to acknowledge. Would you, Sarah, like to draft that letter?
Oh, sure.
And tell them that the Select Board is very grateful for their contribution, that it will be widely used by all people who rent the Town Hall and use the kitchen.
Yep.
And the last item that we have currently, we may have some other things you want to bring up, but the New Hampshire Tax Kiosk. And what's the question about this?
So on the tax kiosk right now, I could show you a picture of how it looks, but it lists the property location, for instance, but it wouldn't list how the property owner's actual mailing address would be. So it was just suggested by Avatar that if we wanted to allow that, it might save people calling our office, because if they wanted to look that up, they could just find it on the tax kiosk.
I don't even know who owns the New Hampshire Tax Kiosk.
I don't either.
I believe Sandy, which Sandy Smith uploads payment into information for that, and actually, I use it, and many people in the office do. Because you know if someone paid their taxes or not, and when they paid them. So it's a publicly known, I think it's done through the state, its own, I think it's a state-funded website.
I would be opposed to it for myself. I wouldn't want my address on there.
Okay.
I think that's not a decision we should make. Because of that, there are privacy issues involved. And I think this is a kiosk that actually almost anybody in the state can get into.
Oh, yeah, it's public information. It's definitely anyone.
So I don't know that we need to give this public information of addresses to everybody in the state.
Okay. It's fine. Just thought I'd put it out there for discussion.
You want to make a comment, Cheryl? Cheryl?
Yeah. Am I here? Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, you're kind of...
Hello?
We're talking about the tax kiosk.
Yeah.
Steve and I have both said we don't feel that we want to add people's private addresses to it.
No, I agree. Yeah, my, it says my internet connection's having issues, so. No, I think that's fine. And I, yeah, I agree on the privacy.
If your internet connection is having trouble, you'd be happy to know that when we start work on our fiber optics, one of the splitter boxes from which the fiber optics will be drawn is going to be behind the church. So up in North Walpole, so it'll be very close to you.
So you're saying, you're saying, because it's next to my house, I'm going to be out of excuses.
Yes. That's right. Yeah, you're going to have good internet connection.
I hope, I'll hold them to it. If it's, if it's really behind the church, then I'll be holding them to that.
That's the location of one of them in North Walpole. All right?
Yeah.
Is there any other new business that we need to bring up?
No, I'm good.
My telephone's talking to me for some reason over here. I don't know why. Okay, it seems to be following us on as we talk. All right. Is there a motion to go out of our Select Board meeting and go into Hooper, please?
Motion to go into Hooper?
Second.